All right, and welcome everybody to the July 14, 2025 meeting. This time we'll call the meeting to order. We've got a certificational quorum.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state and one indivisible.
Father, we thank you so much for your consistency and for your caring of young, small towns like ours in El Campo. So this evening, as we get together and we make decisions for this town, Father, that you would just be part of this meeting this evening. And I do want to pray specifically for Brittany tonight because I didn't pray for her two weeks ago. And I know you didn't miss her, but I did. And I pray that you would just give her the wisdom and help her understand how important she is to our city as well. So as we go through this evening, thank you for those who have come and visited this evening, that you would just give them the words of whatever they want to speak about, Father, and that we just understand that we are a council for the city and that we will do our best. And we ask you for wisdom and direction in that. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, at this time, we're going to move into public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council in compliance with the Texas Openshooting Meeting Act. The city council is limited to making a statement of specific factual information in response to the inquiry and reciting existing policy, but may not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The issue may be placed on a future agenda for consideration. At this time, Michael Bochek, if you could approach the podium, give your naming address, please.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Michael Bochek, and I live on 3113 Meyer Lane in El Campo. And been here 71 years, come to September, born and raised here. My concern is, my name is Michael Bochek. I am here to see what we can do as citizens of El Campo to help with cleaning up our city and keeping it clean at all times. I'm not here to complain, but I come, but to come up with a game plan to see how we can get the people to come together to help clean it up. I believe the commercial property owners, not all of them, could do a better job of keeping their places more manicured. One of them is where Dollar Tree is, and the whole strip mall is a mess. Drive in the back, I just drove there today. There's a two-foot drop-off in the concrete in the very back where you picked up your medicine. If anybody's going to be driving back there with a bicycle, and if a child comes right around that corner and he hits it, he's going to get hurt seriously. I'm serious. If I went in there with my four-wheel drive today, I would have never got out of it. Luckily, I went, I seen it, me and my supervisor. And it's something for y'all, maybe, to drive behind there and see what kind of mess is back there.
I was back there a month ago. I know exactly what you're talking about.
It's sad, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
It's very sad, you know? I'm asking the city manager, Courtney Sladek, to get with the person overseeing the mowing of the highways coming into our city. I believe this is one of the most important ones because that is the first thing people see coming in and leaving our city. I am willing to help or work with the city in any way I can to make El Campo beautiful again. On another note, while the city inspectors are driving to a location or driving around town, if they see something out of code, why don't they make a note of it and turn it into the code enforcement inspector? That would be a big help for him as well. There are other issues that need attending to, like dilapidated buildings, junk in front of homes, or sitting next to the roadway, abandoned vehicles in yards that need to be moved. The question now is, how can we, the citizens of El Campo, get involved and also get involved with the code inspector? I know he has a lot on his mind and that, but I am, the reason I'm concerned is, is because, you see these young kids up here? They're going to have grandkids. And if you want to live in this El Campo, what's it going to look like five, 10, 15, 20 years? I've been in business 25 years, I'm a lawn and mowing business. I do about 80 commercial properties here in El Wharton. I take care of about 70, 80 homes. In the last 25 years, I've seen El Campo go downhill, big time. Trash everywhere, we're not enforcing littering or nothing. And I think we can do better. I think the code enforcement officer can do better. And I just, I don't see El Campo go down, you know? I'm 71, I don't know if I'm going to be here tomorrow. I'm going to see my cardiologist tomorrow because I'm having issues with my heart stopping. So, but, you know, I want to take care of El Campo.
Reach out to you.
You know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, this time, Steve Ward, please.
Stephen Ward, 803 Mabel Street, El Campo. Good evening, city council and staff. In January, I chose not to seek reelection to council. However, the actions taken by city staff on July 1st have forced me to reengage with city affairs specifically related to District 1. July 7th, I sent city council an email to council@cityofelcampo.org, listed on the city website to address my concern, issue, and complaint. To my surprise, I have not heard from any member of council, including my District 1 representative. So I ask, did you receive my email? Remember, an open records request can verify your response. As a council member, I followed policy, procedure, and protocol regarding the representation of the residents in District 1. Once a concern, complaint, and/or issue is logged by a resident to me, I would forward it in writing to the city manager. At this point, the responsibility lies on the city manager to resolve the issue. Now, as solely a resident, I continue to follow policy, procedure, and protocol regarding engagement of council by sending emails to council via the email previously mentioned. As a councilman, I have your personal emails and phone numbers, with the exception of Councilmember Algar. However, as a resident, it would not be proper for me to use these means, as most residents do not share this privilege. Therefore, it would not be right for me to use my previous position to circumvent proper procedure. Again, I will ask, did you receive my email? The issue I addressed has been ongoing for nearly 10 years. My mother has patiently waited for her driveway and ditch to be properly repaired to the condition that existed prior to the multiple waterline repairs over the years and prior to the most recent placement and replacement in 2023. As a council member, I was assured by the city manager and public works director that repairs would be completed in a timely manner, along with repairs to neighboring ditches. Almost 17 months later, and at the end of my term, the repairs had not been performed. Finally, after two more months, the repairs to the driveway were performed, although not properly. Pictures are included in my email communication. I've asked twice if you've received the email I sent, as I have not received a response from anyone other than the city manager in an email and public works director in person. Why does the city manager receive the email when it was specifically addressed and sent to council? How many times have council emails been circumvented? I believe the city manager has and continues to spoon-feed council information to serve our agenda. There are ongoing issues that lack resolution, which have been shared with the city manager for districts, residents in District 1. On July 9th, I shared with council to the aforementioned email an issue on behalf of a resident, which has been ongoing for over a year. I will ask, did you receive this email? How do residents share their concerns with council when they are not being addressed and resolved by city staff? And when email communication can be intercepted by city staff? What will, what will it take to receive representation in District 1? Letters to the editor, Facebook posts, lawsuits, attorney general opinions, Department of Justice complaints?
Thank you, Steve. Next, Dan Harris?
Yep. I attended, this is about the-
You can please state your name and address, please.
Dan Harris, 2308 Hancock Lane.
Thank you.
Okay, I attended meetings regarding the Creekside development that was brought to us from developers out of Houston to put some new apartments on the belt, on the loop. And there was a lot of changing of the designation so that they could accommodate that. But one of the issues that was very prominent in all the presentations was we did not want government housing. And we were assured that this was not government housing. This was all private, invested, and it was going to, you know, the up-and-coming people of El Campo needed these high-end apartments with granite tops and clubs and barbecue pits and everything they were going to put out there for these apartments. And then we see in the paper that the apartments are converted to Rural Development Section 538, what have you, federal government. And they will provide rent for people with 100% of median income, and they give you categories of one person all the way to eight people in the family. And you multiply that by 1.15, divide by 30%, or hit it with 30%. And the monthly rents they're going to allow are between $1,950 for a single, up to, and I went to four-person, is $2,700 that the government would pay in rent. Now, these buildings are going to be, they're going to be financed with a loan from the government. And so you can be in this little consortium of investors and not really invest, take a government loan to build these apartments that are going to be filled with people that don't have to pay the rent. And the going rate is about double what Viejo can charge for apartments for the same part, you know, like a single family or with three people, two or three-bedroom. I mean, they can't compete with these kind of numbers. And I'm just here to protest, we all, nobody wanted government housing, and that's what they are. And I think their building permit or their, whatever they got from us, needs to be rescinded. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, I believe that's all the public comments we got for this evening. At this time, we're going to move to item number six, consideration, I mean, item number five, the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Any discussion? No discussions, sorry about that. All right, moving on to item number six, consideration of an action on item number one, which is Resolution R 2025-32, awarding real estate appraisal review services for the CDBG MIT Trespolasius Creek Drainage Improvements project to Hagnes and Shillings Real Estate Appraisal and Compliance Services in the amount not to exceed $41,600 and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all related documents or amendments.
Yes, so the $14.8 million Trespolasius Creek Drainage Project that you're all familiar with, that's funded through the General Land Office, requires the acquisition of around 52 easements. About 30 of these are going to be worth $10,000 or more. And GLO requires, I'm sorry, yes, GLO requires that these easements are appraised, and then the appraisals are reviewed. So last meeting, you appointed, you awarded the appraisals. This meeting, I'm asking you to award the review of those appraisals. And this will, this will be funded through the grant. We're asking you to adopt Resolution R 2025-32. The potential cost on this is up to $24,000 if all of them need appraisals. Appraisals and thus appraisal reviews.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 20, you jumped it.
2025-32.
Okay, 2025-32.
We got a motion on the floor, anybody like to second that?
Second.
We got a motion and a second? Discussion?
So this was a little confusing to me, but I did speak with Ms. Sladek. And I guess there's no way to get around this. You have someone that does the appraisal, and then you have someone that reviews the appraisal, and it is required by the GLO?
Yeah, the General Land Office for the funding, addition of the funding.
And this is just flat-out, has to be done that way, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and I made a misstatement earlier. We, the resolution says not to exceed $41,600. We're, we're hopeful that we can, we can get out of here with $24,000. But if we do all of them, the cost would be $41,600. I apologize for my misstatement.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yes, and you're absolutely right. We, we're required to do this by the General Land Office.
And follow-up on that, and these folks don't know each other, right? This is, this is basically a-
No, they have no relation to each other.
It's a checks and balance to make sure that the appraisal was done correctly.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor to approve Resolution R 2025-32? Motion passes, thank you. Item number two, Resolution R 2025-33, awarding sanitary sewer rehabilitation services for the Main Street and Lundie Avenue project to Ramrod Utilities LLC for $201,971.13 and authorizing the city manager or their designee to execute all related documents and/or amendments.
The sanitary mains and manholes along Main Street and Lundie, between Mayfield Avenue and East Calhoun Street, between Merchant and Market, have a history of malfunction and are subject to imminent failure. These have been identified in our CIP that we presented at the last meeting. They're a high priority for rehabilitation. You now have the funding to, to complete this project through bond proceeds that were issued in 2024. Those, those proceeds were issued in the bond covenant for sanitary sewer line repairs. You have $1.478 million available in funding after we've awarded these projects. And this project is right at $201,972. In addition, we've included a copy of the engineering proposal. Do not require your approval on that, but wanted you to be aware of the engineering cost. That's less than $50,000, it's $49,900 that we would be awarding in tandem with this project. And if this project is approved tonight, if this resolution is approved, I will be signing that contract after we accept the award to Ramrod. I think Kevin would be best to answer the technical questions regarding the location and the job itself, the scope of the work.
When can they get to it?
They, they put it on the books, they should be able to take care of it as soon as this job is done, on South Wharton and North Wharton completion, which is about three weeks, three to four weeks.
Kevin, is the TIPS system, does it have anything to do with us only getting one bid?
Yes, it's interlocal purchasing, they're guaranteed that way through the cooperative interlocal purchasing system.
So let me ask another question. Is there, would anybody else have bid on it? Explain to me.
Yes, but to get, that's a guaranteed price, the way it is. And they've, even when we bid them out, they were way, way lower.
Thank you.
Courtney, you mentioned the engineering costs associated with it that would be rolled into this, is that in addition?
It's in addition to this, yes.
And that's to the sum of-
$49,900.
Okay.
I will be giving you a total of all these projects at the third project after we get to the next two.
Okay, this, this 201 is directly for the, the utility work?
Construction, yes.
Construction, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin?
I do. So this certificate of obligation, obviously, there's $1.478 million remaining there is, was that, was that foreseen that we were going to have issues like that? So that's why we had that?
No.
Additional?
We issued the debt for North Wharton, South Wharton, and Town and Country, but we worried the bond covenant in case the projects came in under budget, which we weren't anticipating to allow us to do additional sanitary sewer. But we expected the projects to meet the budget, and they came in significantly under. And that's why you have the opportunity to do this.
And this is kind of a, not, so this is unforeseen that this is going to be a problem? And I think we have another one later down?
You have two more coming up on the agenda. And these bonds are not callable, meaning you can't pay them off early. So you'll be making the payments. And if you leave the money in and don't pay them, pay it back with the remaining proceeds. You'll be subject to arbitrage.
Okay.
And so that means you'll be required to hire a consultant to review these funds. I'm not, I'm not advising you to take a position on this particular issue. I'm just letting you know as to why we're recommending utilizing these funds.
Thank you.
And those, both of those projects were bid out, and Ramrod got them both and used those TIPS pricing for that.
Got you. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution R 2025-33 as presented.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you.
Go anywhere, Kevin.
Moving on to item number three, Resolution R 2025-34, awarding sanitary sewer rehabilitation services for North Mechanic Street and Washington Street project to Ramrod Utilities LLC for $228,594.45 and authorizing the city manager or their designee to execute all related documents and/or amendments.
Same song, second verse. I was neglected to mention that Matt Glazer, engineer, is in the audience as well and can answer technical questions. Thank you for coming from Victoria today. Again, this is the TIPS pricing. This project is located along North Mechanic Street and Washington Street, between Frankie and East Correll. Another one of those imminent failures that we have identified. It was also included in the CIP we prepared and presented at the last council meeting. The engineering for this was included under that $49,900 umbrella. It included all three projects. So we'll get you a total on that after the next item, if you choose to, if you elect to pass this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve project resolution R 2025-34. I'll throw in 35, too.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Moving on to item number four, Resolution R 2025-35.
Can we just pass that?
Yeah, well, Mr. Hancock did. He, let me, let me go back to that. That was for Resolution R 2025-34. We had a motion for 34 and R 2025-35, and we had a second.
I think we need to address this.
Yeah, they need to be separate. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution R 2025-35.
But we're still on 34?
Nope, you're on 35 now, I think, Mayor.
We're on 35 now, okay, because the motion passed on 34, now we're doing 35?
I just made a motion on 35.
Okay, we got a motion. Would anybody like to second that one?
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second for Resolution R 2025-35.
Mayor, before you take the vote, the total on these three projects with the engineering is $853,657, which will leave you with a remaining balance on those bond funds of $624,608. At this time, staff is recommending holding on to those funds for potential change orders on Town and Country and South Wharton. That was the information you requested.
All of those projects are included in this?
Yes, sir.
We got last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we need to crash them off the list?
You can, if you approve Resolution 2025-30.
All right, we got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think everybody in town appreciates getting these sewer lines fixed. Nobody likes to see them stopped up.
Yes, sir.
Emergency services have into fixing things like that.
That's for sure.
And it does public works.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, moving on to item number five, City Development Corporation Site Improvement Grant to Sonic Drive-In. 10% of eligible expenditures up to $50,000.
And I will cede the floor to Carolyn Gibson, CDC Director, Executive Director.
Thank you. Thank you all for your prayers for my mother as we've dealt with that. It means a lot. My first project is our new Sonic. A neat little tidbit about that Sonic, his father built the original one in the 70s. And their family is all involved in Sonics in several different communities. He has just about done everything he's supposed to do. We've reviewed all of his invoices and the payment of those invoices. And he qualifies for 10%, up to a maximum of $50,000 for a site improvement grant on a project that's about a million, too. Again, another neat thing, he has in the old location 16 full-time and seven part-time employees. He's going to add six more full-time and 10 more part-time positions. It's amazing, the number of employees a Sonic has. But because it's over 25,000, I am here respectfully asking your approval of that funding. It was unanimously approved by the CDC Board.
Can I ask you a question? Help me understand again, Carolyn, why do we, why do we help companies that are already established when they reestablish another location? Just help me understand that again. I think I've asked that before, and is it, would they not build it the way, to the extent, because they didn't? Why do, why do we do that?
We don't offer it to anybody.
Okay.
People come to us for it. If, if I tried to go out and bring people in to get grants, then it could be said that I was being selective about who I approached.
I hear you.
And the same thing kind of applies to who applies for the grants and the board approving them. We don't, we don't really, that's not really something that we ask. If they're willing to invest a million, too, and, and build a new restaurant, and he's also fixing to do something with the old property, too. We just felt like that was a good investment. And he is, he is paying a good number of sales tax, too.
And I'm so happy that there's a new Sonic, because I like the all-American hot dog.
I like the bacon, I like, I like the grilled cheese and bacon.
I'm so happy for that. Hopefully, there are wider drive-ups. But, so the $50,000 isn't going to give us a better-looking, more beautiful than it, than it would have been if we hadn't used it. It's just, it's basically, it's just goes in his pocket and kind of subsidizes some of the money he was paying.
Yes, sir. That's, that's the way they all work, because they're paid after the project's complete.
Okay.
There's no stickies to the money, they can spend that. He, I would imagine he's probably going to spend it on landscaping, if I had to guess.
Well, I'm happy to know, I don't think that he's going to build and then get this money and sell and leave, like some-
No, 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 no.
Thank you, Carolyn.
No, and he is, he has addressed some, the, I think, I can say, the old property. There was some concern about what would be done with that previous Sonic building.
That was a good question, how long it's going to sit there?
And I personally, I'd like to see it turned into a Wiener Schnitzel. But we're, we're trying, we're working with retail strategies. There are businesses that are, that like to go in where Sonics are, believe it or not. And he has already picked up a packet to apply for assistance for another site improvement grant for that property, if nothing else, but to raise it, to take it to the ground. I got an estimate, and it's going to be somewhere between $22,000 and $25,000, just to take it down to the dirt.
He would want another site improvement to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
It's per, it's per CAD tract is the way the rule is written. And it would be 10%, again. So on a, on a $25,000 project, it would be $2,500.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Help me understand why we should pay to him to tear his own property down?
Because we want another business in there.
That's a good deal, too.
And it's the same answer as the other one.
Could we make the $50,000- Could we make the $50,000 contingent on him tearing that down?
We kind of talked around that, and, and this is what the, the board wanted to go with.
But you're saying that the grant on the teardown would be $2,500 bucks?
It, it, 10%.
I mean, one could surmise that it would look better torn down than baked.
Right, yeah.
So that would be a side improvement.
That, that helps the community overall.
Right.
Worth $2,500 bucks.
That's the way they saw it.
There's a game to be played, and he's playing the game.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we're getting back to, all right, item number five. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the City Development Corporation Site Improvement Grant to Sonic for up to $50,000.
I will second.
We got a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to item number six, City Development Corporation Infrastructure Construction Grant to Junior Smokehouse Expansion, up to $400,000.
This, this Junior Smokehouse is like an Energizer Bunny. It just-
Excuse me.
We do have a request to speak?
She can, if you want to let her see what her life is.
No, it's whatever you put for our attachment fee.
Sorry about that, Steve. I forgot you were, had 6.6 on here. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Carolyn.
You sure? Junior Smokehouse has purchased the property that was Silverstreak Fish Plant in the Mizel Industrial Park, and they are going to add 35,000 square feet to that existing business, to that existing building. In addition to the building, they also own the property, I guess you would call that west of the actual building inside the chain link fence. They had to have a gas line run and Center Point. We, we thought that they were going to come to us. They originally were going to come to us and ask us for help with the gas line, because it would have benefited everybody in Mizel. But Center Point was willing to incent them with the cost of the, the extension of the gas line from over by Mequescas to where they are. They are looking at a, an estimated project cost of $17 million. They have created over 140 jobs in their new plant. They anticipate, and he said this is a lowball number, adding 15. They're going to do a sausage, sausage and snack stick production in that building, and he asked for assistance with the infrastructure. They're going to have to add a grinder and, I think, enlarge the wastewater and water lines. So the board unanimously approved a $400,000 infrastructure grant to Juniors.
Primarily for utilities?
Yes, sir, for infrastructure.
Do you know what the total cost of the utilities is? I mean, what's, what is 400,000 on a percentage basis?
I don't have, I cannot do that in my head. It would be 400,000 out of 17 million, and the 17 million is all-inclusive. When they bring us an application, they include everything in that number of the, the, the project, the estimated project value. We don't pay for flower beds or signs or anything like that. It has to be a permanent improvement, but all of those numbers are included in those total capital investment numbers. Can you, can you do it with your?
Well, so my question was, is of the utility expense, and 17 million dollars is all-inclusive number, so we don't know what the utility expense is.
The utility expense is 400,000.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
So it's, it's 100% of the utility?
Yes, 100% of the utility. In the past, we've done job creation incentives for them, and this time, he, instead of doing that, he wanted to, to get us to help him with the utilities.
What I don't see here, Carolyn, is anything saying X amount of new jobs. None of that's on here, right? But is it, or did I miss it?
That's what she just said.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. He's, he said he was lowballing with 15 the first year.
I missed that.
It's on her memo. I'm sorry. It's page 37, Kaylee.
How much will that accrue our, include or increase our tax base?
Ooh, a lot, a lot.
17 million?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's, I, I don't know that the taxable value will be 17 million. I would imagine the building probably will be in the neighborhood of eight to 10 million, and then you have FFNE, which you pay personal taxes on, so.
64,400. That's the city's portion.
Be nice to bring one.
It's highlighted, I think, I mean, not highlighted, it's in that second paragraph, I think, the jobs. Yes.
140.
Right.
That's, that's at the current plant.
Created and then 15.
15, the son is behind it.
And, and our application has a, a place where they're, they take the years out to 10 and estimate the jobs, and, and he did the estimate, estimation of 15 additional jobs per year all the way out.
Is there a limit as to how much he could have requested?
No, sir. There, there are no, there is no limit. We did a $3 million deal with John's favorite. Still mine.
All right, we're going to-
If, if we could, at this time, if we could let Mr. Ward speak, and then if y'all want to continue discussion after that?
Sure.
Council, as you consider this, I think one question you need to ask, how many more times, or how many times has Junior received economic incentives from the City of, or from the CDC? I think with this one-
This one is third.
Yes, that'll be third, and I think it's almost a million dollars. 750,000 combined, give or take. Be that as it may, this is about as close to manufacturing as you can get, and that's what we are, is a type A. And I mean, it, it is, because you're producing, taking a product into something else, you know? But my question goes back to Tom. They, they bought, or Councilmember-
It's okay.
They, they bought the property. They had full intention of being here. They weren't going anywhere else, and we're going to give them the money. It's an afterthought. Same thing with Sonic. I just chose not to say anything there. One thing that I would say when you make this decision, when I was on council the first time, I think it was 2015, 2016, we, I, I helped bring a, a business to town, and they located in the Mizel Industrial Park, and they created X amount of jobs, and they received $15,000, $20,000 absolute pipeline. They received a, a grant. But what they also did was they supported the city in getting a grant to improve the infrastructure. They put in a sewer line for, on part of that property. My question to you is, why isn't that being done every time that you, they give them $200,000, $300,000, $500,000? That would definitely help that area. It would also help, as Carolyn mentioned, with the natural gas line, it would help supporting that area over there. Need to think holistically instead of individualistically. I think that, as I said, you know my challenges with the way that this funding is given. They were already here. They weren't going. It's recruitment, recruiting or retention. Infrastructure qualifies, but there's already infrastructure there. This is just an improvement to the infrastructure. But if we're going to do this, could we at least try to piggyback and get other free money? It's free money that comes to us that would benefit that area, not only, and it would help offset some of this cost that's extended.
The Texas Capital Fund doesn't, no longer exists. That's why we didn't apply for it here.
No, I mean, did these drive?
Thank you, Steve.
One, one note on one of Steve's comments. The upsizing of the water and the wastewater lines for this project will benefit Mizel, the industrial park area. So that and the gas service also will benefit the, any other business that goes in there, or any business that changes, you know, changes hands and becomes something else.
All right, at this time, would anybody like to make a motion on item number six? City Development Corporation Infrastructure Construction Grant to Junior Smokehouse Expansion up to $400,000.
Yes, I'll move to expand, to give them the grant up to $400,000 to Junior Smokehouse.
I'll second.
We got a motion and second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to state that I firmly believe in the CDC Board, and they took a lot of time to go over this, so I got to have a really good reason to vote against them. So I'm going to go along with what they're suggesting.
We got a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All against?
But you make a very good point.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, Charter Review Commission Appointments. And we can start on the one end and go down the line. We'll start with Mr. Wallace.
All right. I nominate Amy Rod.
The Dodgers?
I'm going to re-nominate Linda Cloud, Linda Ryan, excuse me. I'm old school.
Mr. Hancock?
Ed Irwin.
I'll nominate Anthony Garcia.
Carol Sucker. Todd White.
Todd White.
I'd like to reappoint Andy Musgrove.
All right. I believe that's all the appointments, so we'll move on to item number eight. Distribution of fiscal year '26 proposed budget document.
Yes, and the budget document should be available online. It will be, Brittany clarified, it will be both the document form as well as the, the virtual book. The, the document form itself is that traditional 134-page document. We did not print them out for you today, because they will be changing, because we do not have your tax rate yet. But if you request one, we'll be happy to print it out and give it to you. For our citizens and for the leader news, we'll be happy to provide the link to that so you can access it, and it will be the page by page, so you don't have to go through ClearGov to try to figure out, because I know we had issues with that last year, as was pointed out, so, but we've got the document ready. We have the proposed budget. We're starting the process. At the next meeting, we'll, we'll give you more information about that tax rate, what some of those certified values for you, if action is required on this item.
All right, at this time, this meeting's adjourned.